Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here. Pulos.
Here.
Pulos, here. Johnson.
Yeah.
Johnson, here. Frausto.
Here.
Frausto, here. Veda.
Here.
Veda, here. Rita.
Here.
Rita, here. Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here. Holly.
Here.
Holly, here. Paramo. Alvin Askin, Oslin.
Here.
Oslin, here. Thompson.
Here.
Thompson, here. Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Pittman.
Here.
Pittman, here. Let me present.
Thank you much. Members of the council, I have cast out to prior to the meeting this evening, CD with the copy of the entire record proceedings that have been conducted with respect to the license, business license and liquor licensing proceedings involving the Island Bar and Grill. The city council must review the record of proceedings and have a hearing to determine the appeal that's been filed by the Island Bar and Grill. It has to take place within ten business days of June 7th, so we are going to need to schedule a special meeting for purposes of discussion and deliberation with regard to the appeal on or before June 21st. So I just bring that to your attention this evening, but you all have a copy of the record. I did inform Alderman Donahue that I would see if we could do it on what you call a USB. See what I'm doing. If you want us to get to the date now, we can't.
The 19th?
The 19th.
So Tuesday.
Seven five. So are you agree to that?
Is your motion in second to have a special meeting?
Motion by Alderman Askin, second.
By Alderman Rivera.
All the favor. I implore. So the special meeting regarding the Island Bar and Grill, the council will have to decide that will be held on June 19th, 2018, and seven eight here in the sense.
I would just ask the city council to have to discuss this publicly with respect to the matter until the 19th, when you had an opportunity to review the entire record.
Thank you much. Next, we move on.
Are we going to discuss this at that moment?
No. Do you need time to review all that?
Oh, but I have something I want to say tonight.
Can we keep it on when we have the Alderman announcements? That's normal.
Yes.
Alright. I would appreciate, thank you.
Okay.
Next, we move on to the presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the second consentment for the date of May 22nd, 2018. Motion by Alderman Lado, second by Alderman Pulos. Any questions?
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. U.
Aye.
U, Veda, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Oslin.
Aye.
Oslin, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Hello. Thirteen ayes, right?
Thank you much. I need Mr. James Evans to meet me at the podium. So I need you to raise your right hand and move to Mr. Face and me. Are you going to repeat after me? Follow. Aye, station mate.
Aye.
James Evans, having been appointed, having been appointed to the office of fire, to the office of fire brigade for the city of Blue Island, for the city of Blue Island, county of Cook, state of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do Sunny Square.
Do Sunny Square.
That will support.
That will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Saying that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The office.
The office.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
In the city of Blue Island.
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So hopefully, yeah. Congratulations. We'll have family, candidate. Okay, why don't we do this, candidate, pick your whole family, once you... Yes, you want to, she falls. Falls, first in the woods, yes. Okay, congratulations. Again, I move on to the public comment. Again, this should be limited to many issues on the agenda. We'll try to limit it to three minutes.
My name is Mark Keener. Live at 2250 Orchard Street. I'm disappointed in the council last Tuesday held a meeting about water rate increases. This was, talked about extensively last fall, and people pointed out the fact that we have lots of folks on fixed incomes, we have people who not received raises in a long time, we have lots of abandoned homes and businesses, we have lots of people who are not able to keep up with the bills that they have, and we also have a lot of structural problems with our budget that citizens have brought up repeatedly that needed to be addressed. I still haven't seen action on those issues, and the water rate increase is back on the table again, so I'm very disappointed in that. On top of that, last week, you held a meeting that was not adequately posted, there's a piece of paper out in the front, there was no notifications, lots of electronic media is available, the city website is available, was not posted in any of those locations, you know, by the city, but you haven't had a meeting anyway. So I called on all of you to address this, I mean, this is a serious problem, we have Open Meetings Act that applies to us, that this is not some kind of obstacle to be slithered around like a snake. This is an institution in our society to increase the accountability, to increase the transparency, it's good for you, and it's certainly good for the public, it's something that the public needs and public demands that you follow the Open Meetings Act. Okay, this meeting was not posted, and then there was a presentation made by Mr. Marcel. It would have easily been able to, that could have been posted on the city website also. This isn't secret information, it's not privileged information, there's no personal information involved with this, this is public information, it needs to be available to the public. And I would expect that all of you would take interest in providing that kind of information going forward. Then, since there was no quorum, there was a debate back and forth about whether it was a meeting or not. Well, of course it was a meeting, you had the clerk here, the mayor was here, half the Aldermen were here, there was a presentation, there was discussion, there was back and forth, there was dialogue about public matters, and you saw fit not to treat this as a public meeting. There were no minutes taken, there were no minutes being presented tonight for approval from this meeting. And you also tried to get away with telling the public that they had no right to make public comments about public business at a public meeting. This needs to stop. Do you understand me? Well, you'll also be hearing some more about this because now the Citizens Advocacy Center is involved with the whole process, looking into the violation of Open Meetings Act, which will mean the Attorney General's office will be involved, which will mean now you're going to have additional expenses paid to our city attorneys to answer complaints, file papers with the Attorney General's office, and that's going to cost us even more money. Why are you doing this?
Thank you very much.
Please take care of these important matters.
Anyone else? I need your name and...
I'm Rachael Roscoe, I live at 11957 South Mountwood, and I'm up here, I could be up here for several reasons, but right now, one of the things on my mind is Mr. Shorter. Now, we've debated for years about companies and businesses coming into Blue Island and having a positive effect on us. Mr. Shorter has been supporting the Blue Island community since he's been here, and I've been going to the trials, I know it's an incident at his sports bar, but I think that he has been held unfairly to certain rules that I haven't seen no one else have held to those rules in Blue Island as business owners. Blue Island is basically about thirty percent black, okay? Not that that matters, if someone come to a city, they should have a right to have a business there, as long as they're not coming there selling drugs or doing something, they're leaving. They should have a right to come. I went to some of the trials, and I looked at Blue Island, and this is my home, and it took me back to the 19th, okay? It was obvious that things was being done towards him intentionally, and it's rumored that it's a group of people who live in Blue Island, and some of them are business owners, and they have businesses down there where he is. They think that they're entitled to choose who have a business in Blue Island and who don't. But the sad part of this is that people are listening to them. You have to vote whether we, whether Mr. Shorter continued his business or not. Your vote is not your vote, your vote represent the people in Blue Island. I do not want to be a part of a city that's racist.
My name is Linda Brown. My address is 925 Dartmouth Avenue in Madison, Illinois. I was born and raised in Blue Island, and I do recognize racism when I see it, I was part of it when I went to Eisenhower High School, and I was praying to God that it would succeed at some point, but once my son, which is Adam Shorter, opened up his business to Blue Island, he came with an open heart to try to bring business to a community that we was raised in. The business that he opened was mainly to support my daughter, Alicia Anderson, who was on her way home from work, that slid on black ice up under an eighteen building, who now have traumatic brain injury. He got this business to help support her medical bills, to help support his, her two children, and to help take care of me because I had to quit my job to take care of my daughter, which I still do to this day. I don't feel like Adam had a fair chance, but the moment he walked to 31, 3414 of the Western, the moment he opened them doors to the public in Blue Island, his chances was limited because of the race that he was, a young black man. But this young man works very hard, he's working at Loyola as a businessman, and first of all, let me go back, he went to school, got his masters at the age of twenty-three to become a businessman, to show the world that you don't have to stand on the corner to have drugs. He brought a positive thing in our family to let the young black people see that you can work and you can achieve whatever it is that you set your mind to. He did everything he could legitimately, he doesn't sell drugs, he's not on the corner, he took people off the corner, he tried to offer jobs to people in the community that was different race, but he was told, when they come in for a job, that they was being harassed because they were working for a young black man named Adam Shorter. I just feel that that is such a disgrace to our race, and I feel like you guys are sitting in a position because you had that opportunity to make a difference and take food out of people's mouths. Forty-five employees has no job anymore, my deals have went tremendously high because the machines is running to keep my child alive, that you guys took the business away from him to support my family. I don't feel like that's fair, and I feel like you guys did not give him the right to come here, black, um, young man. He has done nothing but try to do it helps, anything he touched, it was to help somebody, not to hurt them, and you guys have tried to tear this young man's integrity down to nothing, and why? He have done nothing, even the incident that happened had nothing to do with him, it was on the outside of his building, and you held him accountable. This happens now everywhere, it's in churches, it's in schools, it's in homes, you take a one-time offense and take it to a level of nothing? Is that fair?
No.
Is that fair for a young man that... I'm sure you all at some point done something wrong and have been held to a different standard. There has been crime that hit that same Western Avenue, and that club is still open to this day. But why is he singled out to be the bad person? Why do we have to struggle because of what somebody else might have told us to do? It's not like he asked for that to happen, he is upset about that, but the punishment of it is a crime, why take everything from somebody that's trying to bring something to the community? It's not fair, but I'm going to leave this in your hand, God sit high and you look low, and you will answer to him. You may not have, but you... And you guys are all wrong on every level. I sit here, and I heard people talk, you, I don't even know your name, but you tried your best to take everything my son had from him to break him down on an age thing that you, the mayor himself, gave him proof to do it, but you know what, you guys swept that under the rug, we gonna pass that one over, that's not fair. You held up to accountable for just saying you can, you didn't be a man to say, you know what, I said that he can let these people come in, and it was of age, but you didn't never come to him as a man and say, you know what, I'm sorry, I did let you do this, but you know what, again, you have to be accountable for your own actions, just like I told my son. If I don't want nothing, nobody don't want me to have, so that being said, y'all have your way, but God's going to have the last say, so it's all.
Carol DePace Green, 2731 Orchard Street, Blue Island, Illinois. I'm here for two reasons, one of them is the water rate increase and the open violation of the Open Meetings Act that occurred on June 6th, where certainly we have a videotape where the meeting did take place, the meeting was not posted on the city website calendar, and the meeting went forward disguised as a water rate discussion. Material was distributed in violation of the Open Meetings Act. Mayor Vargas, the city council, the finance committee are aware, Blue Island taxpayers want cuts. We want the Meadows close to help the city pay its bills, the full-time patronage job at the rec center eliminated, the insolvent golf course is still open, the rec center patronage job is still on our books. The following information has been requested for Blue Island Aldermen and the public. Our businesses, the park department, the Meadows, the rec center, current with their monthly water bills, it's been reported that there are businesses that are thirty-four thousand dollars in arrears. What percentage of homeowners in each ward is on a water bill payment plan? The other reason why I'm here is for the revocation of the business license, and I want to talk about the bread and bottle. Everybody has heard the story of the bread and bottle, Mayor Vargas, that establishment was in your ward.
Sure was.
In that establishment, where liquor was sold.
Quiet in the back, please.
There were concerns that included prostitution, selling loose cigarettes, selling alcohol to minors, drug trafficking, a man shot and killed. Mayor Pollo went and the city attorney, at that time it was you, Mayor, Attorney Horvath, failed to send proper paperwork to Springfield in a timely manner, resulting in the bread and bottle getting their license back. At no time was there any consideration given to suspend their license. After Alderman Nancy Thompson was elected, the bread and bottle hours were set from nine to nine, and the bread and bottle is now a grocery store, they no longer sell liquor. Mayor Vargas recently held lengthy hearings and issued a very weak opinion to close the Island Sports Bar and Grill. No other business has been held to this special standard, clearly giving the appearance of discrimination. Mayor Vargas should have worked with the business to implement a corrective action plan. Blue Island does not follow state standards as they should. Tonight, in the public health and safety meeting, we heard about a bar where there was an incident outside of the bar. They remain open. Why? Their government has nothing to hide, Blue Island city government seems to have everything to hide.
My name is Patricia Jetter, my address is 1194 Monterey, I'm on behalf of Island Bar and Grill as well.
Monterey, where?
In Linwood, Illinois.
Where is it?
Linwood, Illinois.
Thank you very much.
I've been an employee for Island Bar that's been open, I have four children that I'm trying to raise, you guys shut down Island Bar for almost three months now, I've been in a struggling situation. Adam is a hard-working man, he help provide for everyone, family, friends, you know, who needs a job, no matter good or bad, just to try to get him off the streets. However, you guys took his club closed down, which hurt a lot of people when he was not held liable for anything that was done. He didn't tell the people who go outside and do the shooting, he did his part and get that put out the club, so I don't understand why he shut down when as an owner, what he's supposed to do was get the security, get them to the club, what happens outside of that is not his problem. When something happened outside, if he was outside and tried to take care of it, he couldn't put himself in harm's way, so he did his part, installed the police, you guys supposed to came and did what you supposed to have done, his club been closed down, I don't understand, but I was going to let you guys know that you hurt a lot of families, there's a lot of employees there, all of us have been struggling trying to find different jobs that could fit out scheduled for our children, like I said, I have four small children, and I think it's not fair, and I think you guys should give them a fighting chance to get this club back open.
I need your name and...
Sheree Martin, 153 Stevens Street in Madison, Illinois, and I'll make mine a brief because my main question is that you guys scheduled a meeting to have an appeal done tonight, and then all of a sudden it was changed to now June 19th. If you guys have been going on with this since March, the end of March, March 30th, if I want to be precise, you would think that you had your lawyers there doing this trial for the whole time, you had your board of Aldermen this whole time, a meeting should have been scheduled prior and not keep being prolonged, prolonged, prolonged. However, if you guys do decide, and this is my question, to continue to make your decision as you say, then I believe Adam and Island Sports Bar and Grill should be opened back up until you make your decision, it shouldn't have to keep being closed during this time, and you guys already know your decision. As stated, Adam Shorter is a hard-working man, his employees were hard-working, his staff was hard-working, Adam tried to give back to the community, having us go to different bars to support them, we've been to the bar next door, we've been to the Island Tap place across the street, we've been to Raven's place, we've been down the street, we support the grocery stores, sending our children down, we support the bakery, but how many times have the Alderman or you mayor been in Island Bar to have soul food Sunday when it's open, to have lunch, to, we've been to the taco places, we, he tells his staff to go and support everybody in Blue Island, but I'm not sure how many faces in here I have seen actually come support Island Sports Bar and Grill, but you say it's a nuisance to the town, but you haven't come for your, seen for yourself, the people that come for comedy shows that smile, the people that comes for step-in lessons, the people that comes to have their meetings when they're capers, when they're in their fraternity sororities, their church services coming after church, just to be able to come to Island to have a nice meal, yet and still it's a nuisance to the community, how so? How do we have still almost four or five ratings on our social media pages, but we are nuisance? How do we have some people in the community that still come support us daily after they get out of work, yet and still Adam Shorter's business is still not good enough for Blue Island? Is it because he's making too much money but not giving back to Blue Island, so we giving you money under the table? I'm not sure what the problem is, I just, however, I just think it's definitely unfair, and it, and I just think he needs to be treated fairly, and as Linda, my mom stated, I've said the same thing to my brother, don't go anywhere where they don't want you to be, you're a great man, great businessman, take your business somewhere else, but at the same time, you're, they're losing not just Island Bar, they're losing a great man who gives back to his community, so they'd rather lose that because of a color issue than that's their loss.
Name and...
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Alderman. My name is Cassandra J. Matts, I am a trustee of Olympia Fields, my address is 2732 Cherry Lane, Olympia Fields. I'm here tonight and I'm listening to everything that's going on, and I'm a little disappointed. I don't know if you know anything about the American dream, I happened to stumble on it as a young girl, because no one told me about the American dream, but fear that I might find it and catch it, so as I go along and I hear about the American dream, it says you have to do several things, there's a formula. The formula is, keep yourself clean, keep your nose clean, stay out of trouble, go to school, get your education, get your degree, get you a career, get you a family, wife, husband, three kids, have a dog, get you a house, and get you a business, and when you do all that, you're on your way to finding the American dream. I believe Adam Shorter did that, not only is he an educated black man, as his mom stated, he got his masters degree at twenty-three years old, not incarcerated, not in prison, no kids out of wedlock, has a beautiful wife, has three kids, has a daughter that has sick or cell, has a foundation now, not only to save his daughter, but to save other young kids who have sick or cell, who life might not be prolonged without money. As his mom stated, he has a sister that he is taking care of, his mom had to retire early without a retirement benefit or pension, but had to retire and rely on the family to take care of her daughter, who is now bedridden due to having an accident. It's unfortunate that we are not here today looking at the bigger picture, but everything that's going on in the world and everything that's going on with the economy, it's hard pressed to find businesses, we're scrambling with the state, with the county, putting on extra taxes on businesses, on homes, the gentleman came up and he talked about the water bill, we're fighting about the water bill in Olympia Fields, because there's a middleman, and our bill is high, but I don't mind paying my taxes, I don't mind paying my water bill, I mind my money being misappropriated, that's what I mind, I'll go after the money to take care of that. As I stated before, I'm a trustee of Olympia Field, Mr. Shorter has a business in Olympia Fields called Redwood, it is thriving, it is a great establishment, we come there all the time, you can catch me there three days out of the week, because I want people to come to his establishment, and when they looking for me, and they want to talk to me about the state of Olympia Field... And when they looking for me and they want to talk to me about the state of Olympia Field, you can find me at Redwood. And that's where I'm at. You have a young man who brought a business to your community talking about diversification. As his sister said, we go to other businesses here. I'm always at Maple Tree. And that's not even in my area. I love it. But I bring my money to Blue Island, because we're a region. And if we don't look at this as a region, if we don't start retaining our businesses and then adding to them, it is hard to replace a business and add to them. With the economy the way it is, I wouldn't run from this business. I would embrace it. Because when you're losing tax money, the gentleman talked about his water bill, it's going to go up. Because when you losing revenue, you have to replace it with something. And the residents are not going to want to replace that revenue with their hard-earned money. So I beg you and I urge you to rethink this. This business has been closed for far too long. He has employed over forty-five individuals that could possibly be doing something counterproductive, but they're making a living for their families. And it's unfortunate that we are here today talking about something that has absolutely nothing to do with his establishment. As the young lady said, there are killings out here that is ridiculous. In churches, you're getting killed. The babies in schools are getting killed. Do you shut the church down because someone came in there and killed them? Do you shut the school down? No, everybody's descending on that school. They looking at how to put guns in schools, which is a travesty, as opposed to gun reform. I'm just shocked. I'm shocked, I'm saddened that you don't see this business as being something that is vital to the community and that can bring a little diversity to the community. We are more connected than we are disconnected. If you just give us a chance, and we give you a chance, we can hold hands together and find out we like each other.
Don't go back to the Maple Tree Inn. Do read that paper.
My name is Cliff Taylor. Address 192065 Drive, Country Club Hills. I'm not a resident of Blue Island, so I can't speak for the residents, but I can speak to the character of Adam Shorter. He's a consummate professional. He's a quality individual. He's an outstanding man, public servant, husband, and father. And he's an outstanding businessman. Now, I set you some of these hands in support of him as a fellow businessman, because I know how it feels for your livelihood to be taken because of politics. And that's what I see happening here. He was put on trial and vilified like he shot someone. I don't get it. This is this man's livelihood being taken away for politics, and that's how it looked to me. So I just appeal to you guys to search in your hearts, look again, and see what this man is really about. Get to know him, get to know what it's about, get to know what he's about, what his businesses are about. He's a quality individual, because I guarantee you, if you got to know him, a lot of you folks will be thinking different. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Summer Maxwell. I am not a resident of Blue Island. I live in Summit, Illinois. My address, seven-five-two-two West Fifty-Eighth Place. First and foremost, I would love to thank Ms. Thompson for having the courage to applaud her us when we're speaking the truth. I appreciate that a lot, because, yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. What Ms. Thompson displays is courage, and I'm trying not to get choked up myself. A little bit about me, I'm twenty-four years old. I started at Island Bar when I was twenty-one years old. Adam is now my soon-to-be brother-in-law now. Marcel is his brother. We met there when I first started. I came to Island Bar after leaving Governor State. I was playing basketball there. I was in debt two thousand dollars. He took me in, he gave me a chance, and now I'm back out of a job again. I just graduated two months ago. And me, alike a lot of my other coworkers, were stuck. And were stuck for unfair reasons, in my opinion. I worked that night, the night that the incident happened. And me and Marcel, we were behind the bar, also with Prentice, the manager. And when I tell you everything that our doorman did when they were inside of Island Bar was exactly what they should have done, I stand behind that firmly. The lady that was there, she had no reason to go outside along with her posse, I'll say, and do what she did. And now we're all being held accountable for somebody else's actions. And I would say this, if anyone is shooting at me, I would hope and pray that somebody would protect my life. I have a son who you asked to calm down in the back, who's shaking the ball. He's two years old. We depend on Island Bar to feed him, okay? So one thing I do want you all to know is Adam Shorter is probably one of the best men I've ever met in my life, besides Marcel, of course. He has given me multiple opportunities to move forward. Like I said, now I have my bachelor's degree, and I'll tell you this, I paid for that bachelor's degree from working at Island Bar, from working at Red Star, another one of his businesses. I wouldn't have been able to do it without him. And now I have a family. His mother, she not only takes care of Alicia, she takes care of Brandy, who's sitting right next to her, which is Alicia's daughter. She takes care of Berrius, which is her son. She takes care of my son, MJ, when I need her, when I need to go on vacation, when I need to go on interviews. Adam's wife, Danny, that's the godmother of my child. When I need them, they're there for me. So now it's time for you all to be there for them, because without them, there's nothing. There's nothing in our family. Forty people are out of a job, and the employees that are here today, some of them are new, some of them have been there since I've worked, since I started at Island Bar. We're here because we believe in it. If we didn't believe that this was worth it, we wouldn't come. This is the first time I've been able to speak, because I stood outside for hours and hours every time you all had a trial, because we didn't have a chance to say anything. All we heard was, "Next week, next week, next week." And every week, dreams are deferred. We're running out of time. So honestly, the only thing that I can say is, just give it a chance. Sometimes you need that third and fourth chance. He deserves it, we deserves it, Mrs. Thompson wants us to have it too, so, thank you.
My name is Melvin Jetter. I live at 19841 Lake Park Drive in Linwood. I guess I'm just here as far as being a character reference by my nephew. I've known him, I have him since he was born. Growing up in Roland, you know, rough house, rough house, you know? And it's really, it's really great to see somebody come out of their neighborhood. And, I mean, I consider myself successful. I've worked in the past thirty years, so, I can say myself successful. But for him to take it to that level where it's not about his success, it's about him positioning others to be successful, him taking people that I grew up with, on one hundred and thirteen, hanging out on the street. You know, it's not like they're bad people, but because of the things they did in the past, they haven't gotten an opportunity. And Adam has taken those people and given them opportunities to work, to survive, just to benefit themselves. And I think that's one of the biggest things that's being taken away from this. And, you know, I'm not here to say black or white. I'm not here to talk racial, you know, that's not what it's about. It's about this young man and the strength he had to go out and live, put all this money in to create an opportunity for others. He didn't create an opportunity for himself. He's a hard-working financial director at Loyola. He's not doing this for himself. He did this to get so many people off the street. And he did that. And I knew a number of those people. And they were happy to be working and happy to be successful, at least just doing something to put money in their pockets, just not happy to ask for handouts, you know? Not have to do something stupid to try and make a buck. You know, this is what Adam brought to Blue Island, is what he brought to both neighborhoods, because people that worked there could have worked for Blue Island, they could have worked for Roland, it could have been Linwood, it could have been Harvey. But he's just giving people chances. And I think with that, you know, I would just hope that you guys could give him a second chance. I think he's deserving. I've been at these court hearings. This ain't kind of one-sided. But, you know, in the end, I'm just here reaching out to you guys. I think that he deserves another chance. He really is, you get to know him, he's really a great young man. And he's only going to get better, you know? Whether it's here or whether someplace else. You know, I just, you know, I hate to see the fight taking out on me here. You know, I'm glad that he's still fighting, I'm glad he's still trying. Because, you know what? He's moved me to take my retirement money and try to open up a club. I try to do the same thing. I'm trying to follow his lead. You know what? This is a young man that I think followed my lead into, you know, the business world. And then here it is, now I'm trying to follow his lead that's not true. You know, it's a cycle. You know, we can learn from each other. You know, I learned things from him. I think he's a great guy. I think that Island is a great place. I love the soul food Sunday, I love stepping. You know, I'm an older guy. I'm not going to be out there with the booty shakers and all that stuff. But there's difference, it's diverse, you know, there's times for everyone to go up in there and just enjoy the pleasure. And that, I guess, you know, that's all I've got. I just hope that he gets a second chance. You know, I hope he gets a second chance.
My name is Annette Austin. I reside at Bishop Park, two-two-six-two-six fifty drive. And Adam has allowed myself and my group who teach dances, we teach many different styles of dance, he's allowed us to teach at the Island Bar. And we offer classes to all levels and all age groups. And we have a lot of tour participants that come to our class. They would not come to the Island Bar if they felt unsafe, if they didn't like the environment, and we wouldn't be there. And I really hope that you take the time to think and make a good decision on whether or not you want to keep the Island Bar open. I wouldn't be there if I felt unsafe. I wouldn't be there if I didn't like the environment. The food is great, the drinks are great. The Island Bar family, they are very welcoming and open to everyone. So with that being said, I hope that you all make a very positive decision when you decide on appealing your decision on his license. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is City Council. My name is Jamaica Brown. I live at 160 Stevens Street in Madison, Illinois. I'm here today on behalf of Adam Shorter, Island Bar, and as his sister, and also as an elected official. I was here through most of the hearings, and I was saddened and disheartened by the way that my brother was treated. Adam has been devoted to this community, to his staff, to our family. And I feel as though he was not giving, given a fair opportunity here. Anytime that the mayor hires the attorneys that represented the city, and then the mayor also turns around, and then he's also the judge of that trial, that alone shows you that he was not, he never had a fair chance. And that is, it's embarrassing, it's embarrassing that that was even allowed, that that even happened, that no one stood up and said, "You know what? We can't do this, we're not going to do this." But instead, it went on. Week after week, we came here for the same kangaroo court. It's time that it stops. Black businesses matter, just like all of these other businesses in this community matters. And I know you're tired of hearing the race card, but you know what? When you give me a reason to put those cards away, then I will. But right now, like it makes you uncomfortable, it makes me uncomfortable that other businesses in this community can have the same crimes and get treated equally. It makes me uncomfortable that my brother, who's a hard, educated, working man, who put everything into that business, when you, when I first, when he first told me that he was coming to this community, I said, "Adam, you know what? Are you sure?" I was afraid for him. I was afraid for the gangs that were here. I was afraid, because my grandmother bought a house here fifty years ago. And the same thing that was happening then is happening now. The same racist things then are happening now. And people don't want to talk about it, you want us to close our eyes and pretend like this isn't happening? This is real. This is real. And I want you to understand that it won't stop here. We're going to fight this tooth and nail. My mother raised some fighters. And I want you to know, if you want to go to the appellate court, to the Supreme Court, it won't stop. It won't stop. I'm going to do everything in my power to stand for what's right. And I hope that you will do the same. I hope that you will do the same. When I stepped into this role as an elected official, I wanted to give back to my community. It wasn't about me. But so many times when we get into these roles, we make it about ourselves. This is not about you, anybody up there. Everybody has a political career and ambitions, but when you do the wrong things to the wrong people, you won't have a good outcome. It just don't work like that. To do what's right, to do what's right. Reach into your heart and think about it. He did nothing wrong. I mean, things could have been different, but then, as everyone said, there have been shootings in schools, libraries, churches. What can you do about that? The only thing you can do is come to the mayor. "Mayor, I need help." Which he did, and he did not receive the help that he asked for. I don't know what else he could do. I've seen emails from Alderman, even before he even got to court, there were emails from one Alderman to the next stating, "Shut him down." I mean, that's against the Open Meetings Act. I mean, even before he got here, the decision was made. The city attorney, Harbaugh, for Olson and Stark. These are the same attorneys that represent us in Madison, and we have to sit next to them each week knowing that they are trying to destroy Adam?
Conflict.
That's a conflict of interest, another one. But yet, the hearing went on, and it went on. We've been doing this for three months. When does it stop?
I'd like to make a motion to reinstate the business license.
I'm only asking for what's right. Thank you so much.
Can I get a second?
Motion over to the chair, please.
I second Kevin's, I'll be a daddy in his motion.
Thank you all, have a good night.
There's a motion on the floor.
Mayor Vargas, board, clerks, and everyone here today. I thank you again for taking another day out of your time to listen to me and everyone else in the audience. We all know what happened on March thirtieth. It was an incident that I never wanted to occur. Patron asks to leave, they get upset, they go to their car, they shoot. Nothing different than what happened in Orlando. My guys, they decided to do something on their own that I don't ask them to do. You cannot carry in my premises. I have signs saying do not. But once you get outside of my doors, I can't control what occurs. I was saddened, I was hurt, I was destroyed. On my way to my son's AU game, I get the call, something happened, I come back immediately. The same footage that I gave to try to be a good partner in this investigation was the same footage that the attorneys tried to use so aggressively against me. But again, I gave and became a partner gave any and everything that was asked of me. From the beginning of times when I was here, my business has only gotten better. If you look at my track record, you can say it's a continuous of things that have occurred time and time again. I know if I stand here today, decisions are made, minds are made up. But the only thing that I can tell you, I'm going to continue fighting. I am not here for Adam Shorter, nor my immediate family. I'm here for my employees. I am not here for Adam Shorter, nor my media family. I'm here for my employees, for the community, for the residents, and for the individuals that visited my business. So I have to stand up and fight for what I fought for to give to others. During the hearings from the lawyers, I was treated the worst I ever was treated as a man, especially by Mr. Morris up there. And that did not faze me, the ways, the small mechanisms of things that he would say to try to get underneath me, walking aggressively to my skin. I'm gonna speak the truth. I was gonna let it all just go. I wasn't gonna fight. But I got a letter in the mail that said, "Mr. Shorter, if you keep fighting, we're gonna try to come after all of your businesses." We're gonna try to pull them off." So I decided, I'm gonna move every business and fight, because it's not about the business. I've made my soul. I know I am good, as long as I got breath in my body, my wife can protect me from all this what happened. So I know I'm ready for fighting. But that's what made me continue when you threatened the livelihood of not only this business, but you threatened my other businesses? I own numerous businesses, so many that you would not even imagine, that's not even in the bar arena. These things have hurt me so much to my core. I have decided for the rest of my life, as an elected official, I'm gonna trust you just like you're old. I would never have done some of the things that were done. But I might not be official in Blue Island, but I promise you, this is my heart from now on. I never ever, not once, used a race card. I never will. I never and not once went to the media, never not once over seen anything that I ever had. All I wanted to do was be a good partner in Blue Island. When I came over here, my aldermen were scared. They got jumped on before I thought, pushed on outside. So they told me they were scared. They protected themselves. Before the city revoked my license, which they did less than two weeks ago, I, I terminated them all. They said, "Get a new security team." I only want good people around. So I believe in pulling individuals with me, because I know, as sure as I grow, in circumstances like this going out, I'm gonna get pulled down, so I gotta make sure others behind me are stronger. I asked for police support time and time again. Any alderman. Actually, the fortune emails, dozens of times, can I get presents? No, I know other individual bars and locations and eateries get a present, stores. Never was it afforded to me. The mayor pushed forth, but I couldn't get it from other. So I say all this to say, I did everything that I could have possibly done. But what I asked you to do today, I actually resent the bill. I don't wanna wait no more. I wanna know where my future is. I wanna know what to tell my staff. I can't continue listening to individuals cry to me and say, "When are we getting back, boss?" When somebody else is just kicking a can. These proceedings have went on a long, way too long. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have been lost. Individual houses are gone. Individuals can't feed their kids. I'm reaching and grabbing and pulling and trying to help as many as I can. But let me lose so I can go appeal to the next level, or win and go forward and move? I operate a full-service restaurant, looking with just a component. I fed the homeless. I gave my extras back. I did coat dry, toy dry. I supported the, the, any, any event that somebody asked me to go towards support if I wasn't there, my dollars worked. And so I say that, just give me a fair opportunity. There were shootings at other bars. There were killings at other bars. I, I decided my business to go try to pull down another bar because of what I'm going through. That's not right. Only thing I can say is, just give me the opportunity. I'm only fighting because I'm threatened. That's why I'm fighting. My back is pushed against the wall. And because I speak out, it's only gonna get worse. They're gonna push. But I'm prepared for the worst because the worst was put in front of me. You fight, you come back, all of them. But I'm gonna tell them, okay, I'm liquid now. I, I go and reiterate again, whatever the case may be, but I'm here to stand. I thank you for listening to me. Thank you for listening to everyone that came up. All I wanna do is be a good business partner. I have numerous locations. The only one I ever had a problem with is Blue Island.
I wonder why. I let everybody know what. When I speak, I'm gonna let everybody know what.
I ordered it. It came from a attorney said, "It has come to our tissue at your numerous bars."
Send it to my email, too.
I sent it, and basically, if you continue to fight, you can risk losing it. But they didn't realize, that's not what I do. I, I only have businesses to provide. I am okay, regardless of what these outcomes may be. Here, my family, if I'm not here, it's gonna be okay. But what I'm not okay is being threatened. And because of that, I'm telling you, my mission for the rest of my life until I go, is any, I don't need the things that go on. I'm gonna put the spotlight on it. I'm gonna bring it to the forefront. So regardless of Island Bar, girl, that's here, I'm here for the people, and for the residents and for the individuals that come, because I did not feel the righteousness of the threats, the bickering, the antagonizing, and all the other things that come that was inhumane to anyone else. Like someone mentioned, you might as well have thought I was the one that killed 21 kids in this school how I was treated. It wasn't recorded, but it was remembered. God bless everyone.
Again, I'd like to make a motion to reinstate the business license. It is on the agenda. Alderman Dany who seconded my motion.
Good evening. My name is Blake Forowitz. Well, my business or personal address? Well, my business address is 111 West Washington, downtown. So you've heard a very passionate group of people. This is obviously not just any regular business. This is a business that is profoundly supported by the community. And I cannot believe that a community is here for this business. This is a business where people traditionally, um, go and relax, have a beer, dance, or eat at a restaurant. And they are here passionately. These are voters. They are here. They are paying attention. They are ticked off. And there's some reasons to be ticked off. I'm gonna articulate as a lawyer some of the points you guys have heard, and I'm gonna articulate a couple more. So there's one issue that I have a concern about, and that is that I submitted the appeal on June 8th with regards to the business license. The municipal code says, it's 110.50, says you have to have a hearing relative to it in five days. The code says you have to have a hearing relative to it. I have the code. I can read it to you right now verbatim. It says, 110.50, the municipal code provides, it's five days. If there's another section of municipal code, I just read it right before I came up here, that's what it provides. The date you provided is not five days. It's about, oh, I didn't count it exactly. It's maybe seven or eight business days later. Seven or eight business days after I filed it. So I filed it last Friday. Okay. The second concern I have is something that I have addressed in the documents, and I have the same concern right now. And that is that, um, Mayor Vargas, in the hearing, you indicated that the codicil procedure applies. That means the rules apply as it applies everywhere. That's what you stated in the hearing, and I abide by that. I follow it. But the problem is, as has already been stated, Kerry Borbath, who sits to your right and right now is talking and trying to regulate the legal matters in this hearing right now, you chose him as your lawyer, publicly stated about a year ago, and respectfully, Mayor, you stated, "I wanna hire Kerry Borbath." At least that's what's published in the newspaper. That's what I saw. I saw this after the hearing. So the gentleman that's sitting to your right, you stated, "I want, I, I, I," you were unhappy with the prior law firm. You wanted Kerry Borbath, and you wanted a law firm that he works at. And then you were the judge, and Kerry was the prosecutor, and Kerry sits to your right right now to help regulate this meeting. The rules provide that the appearance of impropriety is not permitted. It's not permitted as a judicial officer, and you were a judicial officer respectfully. It's been raised in this hearing. I submitted my brief and my appeal. It, it's not okay. It's the, and whether or not there is an actual impropriety, it's the appearance of impropriety. And these people are ticked off in part for a reason, because the appearance is, respectfully, that the gentleman to your right, who is doing legal matters in this hearing right now, is a man that you chose, and is a man who is your lawyer, as an official capacity, is your lawyer, and you gotta listen to him.
As a city lawyer, not my.
Daily, you must listen to him, and you must respect him as a city lawyer, exactly. Officially, you are to respect the man to your right. And he was arguing to close down Adam Shorter's business, and that's not okay. That is the appearance of impropriety. Everybody needs to be aware of this, because that's what the rules prohibit for lawyers and judges.
Counsel, as you know, that's why appeal process is.
And I'm stating right now, and I think it's important for the people who hear this.
As a lawyer, you know, you're treading on some very delicate ground, counsel.
Okay. Are you, are you threatening me? But I heard that. If I'm inaccurate, that can also be stated, but these people have a right to understand it. If I'm inaccurate, please let me know. I heard your comment. And I have a responsibility to make sure that Adam Shorter's objections are well-stated. And I've stated, all right. With regards to the facts of what actually happened on this day, what you heard was that these people, the employees of the bar, came responding, they responded to a person leaving the bar saying they were gonna shoot people, or words to that effect. In other words, people could die, shot dead die, and if that happened, Mayor, in this case, then there would have been a whole different scenario, like what happened in Florida, in the Parkland shooting at the high school, a completely different situation, where the news, the media, everybody would be flooding over here to wondering, "How, how many, how many minutes was it that the police department responded?" Well, in Parkland, it was six, and there was actually an officer there at the scene in Parkland. And six minutes, everybody else came in. How many kids died?
Seventeen.
And, and the Orleans shooting, about a year prior in Florida, how many people died? Well, peculiarly, these gentlemen went out and secured weapons, and they defended the bar. Adam has a sign in front of the bar, and the sign says, "No weapons allowed." His staff is not allowed to have weapons, but they had weapons. And as you heard some of the testimony, two people said that they heard the man who said that he was going to shoot, and he went to his car to go grab a gun. And there was no other alternative evidence presented at the hearing. In other words, for people to understand here, there was one of the shooters went to his car to grab a gun, responding to the comment that a patron who was drunk said, "I'm gonna go and grab my gun." She grabbed her gun, and then she shot at the bar. When she shot at the bar, he responded with his gun, an employee who went out to get his gun. Now, there was another gentleman who also went up. There was another gentleman who also shot from the bar, apparently, as the evidence came in, who was an employee. I don't know where he secured that weapon. I don't know if he secured it afterwards, just like the other gentleman. But that is the evidence that came before. And regardless, Adam has a sign that prohibits weapons. His employees are not allowed to have weapons, period. He did what he was supposed to do, and his employee was on the phone immediately calling 911 after the shooting. One last thing I'd like everybody to be aware of. There's two avenues to this appeal. This is the business license, as you, as you guys know. This is appeal to business license. There's also liquor license that we're going to be appealing. Interestingly, you'll be fascinated to know that when there's an appeal to the liquor license, instantaneously, the liquor license revocation is dismissed, or it's stayed until the appeal is resolved. In other words, if this was just with regard to the liquor license, just that, then at the moment of filing, he's allowed to open up his bar. But for the liquor license, which is specific to the municipal code, for Blue Island, we must come before you. So interestingly, in a parallel situation regarding the liquor license, he'd be open right now if this was just concerned with the liquor license. That's all I have to say.
Need a motion to approve a request from Metropolitan South Medical Center to hold their summer family picnic on September 29th, 12 noon to 3 p.m. They elect the head of Newark Street from Western Andrew to Gregory Street, like, 10 a.m. to 4 p.m.
Need a motion? Mr. Alvin Viera, second alderman Austin. Any questions?
Hey, you have more public comment up there?
It's already done, so we're moving on.
Let her speak.
I just asked for a second chance. We asked for a second chance. She never spoke.
We're moving on. Thank you.
She never spoke. That's okay. I'm saying what I want to say. We asked for a second chance.
Thank you. You got a second?
Slatter him. Slattering him high. Fulus. Fulus, hi, Johnson. Johnson, hi, Frosto. Frosto, hi, Valado. Valado, hi, Kaya. Kaya, hi, Rita.
Hi.
Kaya, hi, Dany.
Hi.
Dany, you, hi, Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Ossling. Ossling, hi, Thompson. Thompson, hi, Carr. Carr, hi, Fitman.
Hi.
Fitman, I think he's nice.
And can watch any bids?
No bids, you're right.
City treasurer?
But yet, here. I come today because I'm pissed off, so it's not my action. Things have happened. I call it my department, but it's not my department. It's the mayor's department. It's the city's department by any means. An action took place last week. It upset me. Not functioning for the city. Don't know the cause, but it has an effect. It's an effect on the city. Not my doing. I'm the city treasurer. I have certain responsibilities, but I am not, not the day-to-day operation. When we first took office, we promised transparency, right, Mr. Lumigo?
Yes, correct, Mr. Treasor.
And then also, when you appointed certain people, I asked two questions. I asked those questions to you, and I asked a question to the person who was being appointed. Basically, the question one was, "Do you still want me to be involved in all the financials that affect the city of Blue Island?" That's still the point of the question.
Correct, sir.
Two, I asked the individual who was being appointed, "Has he ever worked with an elected treasurer under the alderman of this function of this government?" It's not trustee or government. And Mr. Borbath, basically, is supposed to give legal advice to the whole council, to the administration, to the city, to protect the city and the people that are administrating. I was not talked to, was not given any information when I asked the appointee, "What's going on?" Can't talk to you. I don't think that was appropriate, the whole action that took place, leaving the city non-functional.
I don't know about non-functional. We're making payroll. We're making everything the city continues to run. Again, whether you weren't a part of that conversation is my doing, okay? It's my doing. Again, I've gotten information from the residents, from the elected officials, that cuts needed to be made to save money for the city, and I removed, eliminated opposition to save money for the city. And we'll continue looking at each department, including the golf course, to see if savings can be made. That's what I've been about.
Yes, but again, we usually collaborated.
We usually, again, we do collaborate, but again, I don't need information leaking or going to somewhere else to get information as to what needs to be done. It stays within house.
Question is, my authority, I don't have.
You have full authority as treasurer of the city of Blue Island.
And that's limited.
Again.
The day-to-day operations, the day-to-day operations is supposed to be the finance director appointed, okay?
We have a finance administrator who was hired, okay? And his responsibility under my office is to help me run the city of Blue Island.
But he's not. It's not working that way.
Maybe in your eyes it isn't, but in my eyes it is. Correct. Correct. You're an elected official, correct?
It's not just a say.
Yes, you do.
Bottom line is, it's not working. It wasn't done correctly. It wasn't done in the proper method to cover the city. Because Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, I get a call under stress that I'm supposed to solve the problem. And I told the individual, it's gotten from the corporate authority. I don't have that authority. I get directed from the corporate authority. And that's why tonight... And that's why tonight, I have to ask the corporate authority for direction, if possible. I don't know the legality of it. The corporate authority has to give direction, because I went to the bank, and I do not have the right, I'm not on the signature.
I am, I am on the signature, as the mayor of the city of Blue Island.
So then why, why was it resolved?
It's been taken care of. To make payrolls. To pay the city bills.
So you supplemented, supplemented, and it's not proper, open discussion, the way we, transparency for this council, this corporate authority. And there's other factors that go on, and it not being told to the corporate authority.
And there's other factors within the corporate authority. If you want me to go into them, I can go into them. We'll just leave it at this. Anything else?
Because I cannot be working for today, the reconciliation statement, if it was in your package, I'm not aware of, okay? Because I can sign off on it, because as of Wednesday, I go back to the office.
So can we move on to the next meeting?
The transfer of funds was not given to me.
Will payroll be made, Mayor?
Payroll will be made.
Even without the signatures at the bank?
If you allow us to do it, we'll pay it. If not, you're going to have some very unhappy employees in the city of Blue Island.
But it's also, things not on the agenda, this isn't on the agenda. You fired an employee without having a plan, and...
We eliminated a position, we eliminated a position, we'll continue looking at every single department to save the city of Blue Island money.
Sure, so you eliminated a position, but there's no plan.
During the appropriations, this body here said that cuts needed to be made in all aspects. And as mayor, I've taken upon myself to make that cut to save the city of Blue Island money. I'm a salary, and we'll continue looking, including the golf course and other areas, to save the city money.
So here, you have all the authority to make that cut, but there's no plan since then, which happened late last week, to get it on the agenda today for the signatures to make payroll and make the bills, and you're going to ask this body to violate the law then?
Not violating the law.
It's not, the agenda, we were ruled out of order, Kerry, before, Mr. Horvath, before, something not on the agenda. There's no resolution for the signatories on the agenda tonight. And I want, I want the good employees, I want our employees to be paid. They work hard, they deserve to be paid. But you made, you fired this employee, you eliminated this position without a plan in place, and now you want us to fix it? You want us to break the law without it being on the agenda?
We have a CKA firm that's helping the city financially, giving their opinion, and we will be following their orders.
Before firing Lloyd Brown, did you know her description of her job?
Yes.
So, Mr. Horvath, can we vote on what the mayor...
He was the fireman, he eliminated a position.
You can vote on the payrolls, you can vote on the payables. You can vote on the...
But you're selling it.
On the agenda, the board of the finance committee, that's what we're doing, of course, as we always say, every meeting. I've been involved since I was appointed to the city attorney's...
But that payroll was for two weeks ago.
The mayor has the authority, as the head of the city, to transfer the funds, to make sure that there are monies available to the payroll, so that the employees can... You ask the city council to approve payroll. If you fail to approve payroll, then you create a situation for the city that's basically saying they're not going to pay your employees with the payroll. I would have a question. So you have the authority, it's not the agenda, it's appropriate for you, right? But I don't know where the, what the concern of the treasurer is, and what he's speaking of, but I think it would be a matter that he could probably resolve without sitting here discussing it as part of the city council's business. I don't know, I don't really know if the issue, I tried to gather some information prior to the meeting, and could not get the information from the treasurer. So bottom line, no, answer your question.
And then just like, could you state the section of the municipal code that has in there the signature or signer on, or has the ability to transfer funds?
Can I say it to you, Brian?
No, if you maybe...
But I'll be more than happy to research the matter and provide it to you.
That sounds great, thank you very much.
Under 65 Illinois compiled statutes, 8-1-1, it says the corporate authorities, which is the alderman, control the finances of the corporation.
I'm not saying that you don't have the authority to vote on the payables, and I'm not saying you don't have the authority to vote on the payroll. What I'm telling you is that it's on your agenda for consideration. If you don't want to approve it, that's entirely up to you, but there are consequences, and that's what I'm telling you at this point, is if you don't approve it or don't approve payables, there are consequences which you visited up on the city. So when you have the authority, it's on your agenda, and it's there, the amounts are there, the items are there. I'm going to tell you, you don't have the authority to...
No, that payroll is from two weeks ago.
The payroll is not there. The payroll is... It's a very good pain.
That payroll is from May 18, 2018.
Needs to be approved. The transfer of funds, restricted funds, in order to pay the council payroll, that has to be moved in.
Well, if you don't want to pay, if you don't want to pay the city's bills, it's more prerogative to not pay the city's bill. What I'm telling you is, there are consequences to not acting to approve payroll and payables. I can't argue with you, Mr. Gresher, I'm just telling you there are consequences.
The corporate authority has to give me authority to make the transfers, and they're supposed to be aware of the transfers. We're not going back 25 years ago, when nobody knew what the transfers were. Okay? I thought enough, and I thought enough before, and I've been through this for two months, because I know this was going to go forward, the questioning, if I pressure enough, or question enough, they're going to be swerved. And that's the bottom line is, I've been doing the transfers, the statements, every two weeks that this happens, or the approval of the council, because the payroll that you're approving here has already been paid. The one that's coming up on Friday has to be addressed, and there's a time sensitive issue by Wednesday. Okay? Now, the mayor has the authority, I never knew about, because I'm the city chief financial officer, district chief executive officer, it's two different branches. Now, if it was around, fine, I don't know the law. I've been doing it my best, because the last six years, I've been a treasurer, and before that, there was no treasurer. It was a shadow. So the question becomes, I needed some guidance, and I didn't get a call until 3:30 Monday. So there's an issue, the treasurer should have been notified, discussed, what's the approach, what are we going, what can I do? I went to the bank, because the miners asked me, this is so bad, I said, fine, I'll go to the, I'll go check out. Bank says, you're not on here to transfer. So unless somebody tells me that, hey, you can transfer Bonnie, and I asked you a few weeks ago about the Bonnie, because I'm concerned about that, because I don't want to be, my family name, my reputation is a secret. And I did privately get in that, and if I don't get counseling from my attorney that's in charge of the city, where do I put together that? Why did, why did, why did the mayor call me up and said, "All right, we have to help put it aside"? I get a call from the appointee, that's literally me.
Commissioner Bellato, I called you to say...
I don't answer, no, I'm not.
Chief, can we, can we have this discussion at another time? Because this other thing is pressing. This could be, this could be discussed at another time. You know, because now I got to get off the road again and come back for a meeting on the 12th that we could have handled today. You know what I'm saying?
I just want to know that on Friday, if people that are working the street now, the police department, public works, there's going to be money in there on Friday for them, because that's money out of my children's mouth, and everybody who's working the street right now is working for free. So if the payroll that we're going to approve, those are already passed. I want to know about June, whatever, June 15th.
We need to have a special meeting to authorize, a resolution to authorize for the transfer of payments for Friday's payroll, otherwise payroll will not be met.
Woo hoo!
Because the person who was on it has been... Wait a minute, can I... The only person that was listed who can transfer funds was fired.
Was there two people that could transfer funds? The treasurer and the deputy treasurer, correct?
And I'm on it.
And the mayor. Okay, so what's...
The treasurer's not listed.
I asked, I went to the bank, and I says, who's on for the day-to-day, what do you call it, accounting?
Transfer of funds.
I'm online banking, I'm online banking, transfer accounts, whatever. Says Lori was the only one. Before that, okay?
We did a resolution for that.
Anastasia Hudson was transferred, Anastasia was transferred to Lori, okay? Short time limit, she was being trained and so on and so forth, okay?
No, he hasn't.
She doesn't.
No, he hasn't.
Checks and balance in place. I can't, it's like he's saying, I'm going to transfer money, I'm... There's a checks and balance in my stuff. I'm the treasurer, I take care of the fund overall, I pay or look over the restricted funds. Payroll, I have nothing to do with payroll. Remember I said that in council, this was only the council payroll, because I said, not the payroll. I can't not get involved with the payroll. That's right. There's a lot of technicalities, a lot of gray areas, and that's why I'm scared. I'm scared because I don't want to be playing for something. And that should have been the council's ready.
Oh, Mr. Robin, Peter, the day call.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm not...
What's the financial situation of the city?
What's going on?
We have the money.
Money's there for right now. I was trying to...
So are we voting on this today, or next week, or Friday? Today, what?
I would suggest that you go ahead, and it's on the agenda, you can harmonize the transfer of funds, with or without treasurer asking...
We need a resolution.
So on Friday, when there's no payroll in there, we can come back here and complain? When there's no payroll on Friday?
And this, but I can't go, this week's not listed, I think that's what the issue was.
And it was supposed to be done this morning. This on the agenda is the old payroll.
Yeah, but for Friday's payroll, there's no authority to transfer the money, so everybody's not getting paid.
So it's about, we should talk about what's on the agenda, and go to the next, whatever that's next on the agenda.
Committee reports.
This, the city employees will not be paid on Friday.
Committee's voting. Committee members, committee members, danger, being covered, 704, President Alderman Bellato, President Johnson, Dean Housley, also President, President Director Mike Marzal, and President Dave Housley. Microphone?
They're off.
Microphones are up.
But the turnip is off.
Thank you. Under public comment, Mr. Dave Housley expressed concern over the number of video gaming locations in town. Standalone video gaming locations are limited to three in the city, and it's a permitted use in restaurants and bars with a liquor license. It was noted that this has helped some businesses in town stay in business. He also asked about demolition of abandoned homes and the grant we received to tear down properties. We did get a grant that will help with paying legal fees and costs involved in declaring a property abandoned and to tear them down. There is a list that the city will be following to tear them down. Under new business, the building and planning report for April 2018 was reviewed. Revenues for the month of, April, sorry, it says February, I'm sorry. April were $80,258,40. The total revenue for 2018 through April is $217,871,69. There were 140 residential inspections, 62 housing court summons issued, and 254,750 in fines that have been sent to collection. There were a total of 226 code violations on the dock for April Housing Court, 136 failed to appear, plus over $76,100 in fines were issued. A letter requesting the waiving of building permits for 2010 Canal Street after an attic fire was discussed, they are requesting a hardship waiver. They did not have fire insurance, and they are longtime residents with a strong desire to stay in the city. It was moved by Alderman Bellato and seconded by Alderman Ossling to waive all fees with no cap to rebuild the attic and roof for the home. All were in favor, motion passed, and will be sent to city council for approval. A request by Bettis to change their hours of operation was considered. They want to change it to 12:00 PM to 2:00 AM on Sunday, 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM on Monday through Thursday, and 6:00 AM to 3:00 AM on Friday and Saturday. There was discussion regarding the hours, and it was moved by Alderman Ossling and seconded by Alderman Frosto to recommend denying the change in hours. All were in favor, motion passed. Director Marzal gave an update on 12601 Western Avenue water bills. They owed the city $60,000. The water was turned off on Monday, April 30th, through the plaza. They came in with a check for the water portion of the bill in two hours, and the water was turned back on within four hours. A payment plan has been set up. They asked for a refund, some of the penalties assessed, city staff is looking into waiving some late fees assessed after December, when they came in initially to discuss payment issue. Businesses were notified a week prior to the shut-off, so they were made aware. The vault is looking to open mid to late June. Ray Thomas has acquired the building in between, which is allowing to move forward much more quickly with the sprinkling on the building. Blue Station Apartments have sold to another management company. We are told it is similar, is a similar company as the previous owners, with the same standards of upkeep for the property. The convenience store over there has also changed hands. Under business district, the Gagleys have been redesigned, taking into account the IDAC concerns. They are currently at IDAC for approval. We are hoping to get the approval in the coming months and be able to start construction by the fall. The following businesses have completed all required inspections for compliance and will be issued for their business license. Pitbull Skateboards, 12621 Greenwood, is a home-based business to sell and teach about skateboarding. Remco Truck Services, 3350, 1226th Street, is a truck and trailer repair shop. Borough Auto Inc., 3215 West R27th, is an auto and truck repair shop, and Metro PCS, 12601 Western Avenue, is a cellular phone retail store. Under all my concerns, Alderman Ossling asked about a conflict between the hospital and St. Benedict's for an event on July 14th. She suggested a community calendar so people know what is happening. There is a calendar on the website already, but people need to get the information to the city in order to put it up on the website. Alderman Rita asked Alderman Hawley to ask about a port of broken windows on the second floor of the old anchor pole building, building. There being no further business, it was moved by Alderman Bellato and seconded by Alderman Ossling to return, motion passed, and the meeting was adjourned at 7:45 PM. Our next meeting is tomorrow, June 13th, at 7:00 PM in city council chambers.
Thank you much. Finance committee?
Finance meeting was called to order at 7:30. Members present, Alderman Frosto, Viera, Ossling, Thompson. Absent, Alderman Hawley, Alderman Farenold. The committee approved the following. Payroll... Payroll for May eighteenth, three hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. I put that in the form of a motion for city council.
There's a motion, there's a second one below. Any questions?
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Bellado. Aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ostling.
Aye.
Ostling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr. Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Thirteen ayes.
Thank you.
A payroll for June first, three hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. I put that in a form of a motion to city council.
Got a motion, second one. Vera, any questions?
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ostling.
Aye.
Ostling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Thirteen ayes.
Thank you much.
Accounts payable for June thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-four cents. This includes a manual check of two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents for the twenty eighteen water report, mailing. I put a motion out of order.
Got a second one below? On the question, they have just listed as two separate motions, that's two thousand dollars.
I can do it as two separate, I mean, it's up to you.
The chairman has a multiple listing.
Okay.
This is separately.
So, I have accounts payable for June thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. I put that in a form of a motion to city council.
Got a motion, second one below? Any questions? Go call.
Slattery.
No.
Slattery, no. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
I abstain.
Rita abstain. Donahue.
I abstain as well.
Donahue abstain. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ostling.
Aye.
Ostling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Ten ayes. One no one, two extensions.
Thank you.
Uh, the next accounts payable is a manual check that was cut for the twenty eighteen water report. This is for the mailing. It's for two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. I put that in a form of a motion.
Got a motion, there's a second. Uh, Hawley, any questions? Call it.
Is this the water quality report?
Consumer confidence report, yes.
And if you pay through the green page, how are you going to be mailed out?
It goes out to every address on the city of Rhode Island through mail managers.
Any other questions?
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
I'd like to abstain again. Abstain.
Abstain. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Ostling.
Aye.
Ostling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Four ayes.
Thank you much.
No further business, motion to adjourn at eight o'clock. Our next meeting, because it falls on the third of July, is changed to July fifth at seven o'clock. East end.
Public health and safety committee?
Yes, Ron. Minutes from the May eighth meeting. Sergeant Chief Kings, Deputy Chief Harzad, Chief Rita, Chief Marshbanks, Captain Kaiser, Alderman Pittman, Alderman Kulos, Alderman Johnson, and myself. Absent was Alderman Donahue. Also in attendance were Nell Pittman and Treasurer Carmine Bellato. The meeting was called to order at six oh five. There were no citizens present. Under fire department business, they had two hundred and twenty-three EMS responses, thirty-two fire responses, sixteen auto aid responses, seven mutual aid responses. Medical reimbursement services collected thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and seventy-five cents for the month of April. Fire recovery received in April was four hundred and ninety-six dollars, and false armed fees collected in April were three hundred dollars. Call of interest, April the ninth, there was a building fire in the twenty-two sixteen displays. April twenty-first, a house fire at one twenty-four thirty-nine Bishop and Calumet Park. April twenty-second, there was an outside fire at three, at three thousand west one hundred and thirty-ninth street. Under general information, union negotiations are ongoing. The fire department participated in the St. Benedict's period basketball game. They also participated in the Blue Island Little League parade. At the May eighth Medal of Honor Day, four members of the fire department received the award, and the fire department eligibility exam is scheduled for June twenty-third. Under maintenance, preventative maintenance is ongoing, and Marine Two is being prepared to be put in the water for the summer. Under fire prevention, inspectors spent the month conducting annual inspections and plan reviews. Fire drills were conducted for Eisenhower veterans and fall repair schools. A service day safety training was conducted for the Blue Island Public Library. Under training, members completed three hundred and thirty-point-five hours of training in April. Under operations, more standard operating procedures were issued and assigned to each member of the fire department, and monthly meetings were held with the three lieutenants. Under the police department, spread sheets accounting for work performance have been established. Data points for performance standards have been finalized, and dialogue for performance standards to begin this month. I'm going to save some time and not read all the training that was done, but quite a bit of training was done for officers. Under injuries, Officer Struzo remains off injured for a mental related injury. Calls for service, there was two thousand ninety-five calls. Money's collected. The police department collected fifty-three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and forty-four cents in the month of April. Under cases of interest, on April eleventh and twelfth, two soldiers were charged for an armed robbery, which occurred on January fourth at one twenty-eight eleven Honary. On April twelfth, one of the offenders in the island bar shooting was arrested and charged with aggravated unlawful use of a weapon. In the month of April, officers recovered five firearms. And that concludes our report, and the health inspection torture were twenty-nine health inspections on the month of April. BAMEA gave a verbal report. They did eighty-two hours of training. The chief attended a township training meeting.